Good afternoon. We'll call the Board of Regents Meeting of Delmar College District to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, April 12th. I will establish a quorum. Dr. Villarreal?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Turner?
Here.
Dr. Adami?
Here.
Mr. Garza?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
And I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Dr. Turner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join us in reading the Delmar College Vision Statement. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities." Thank you. Delmar College is streaming our live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meeting on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. We now have time on our agenda for general public comment. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the board on items not on the agenda today. Seeing none, we are going to, I'm going to exercise my prerogative to move our agenda around just a little bit. We do have as Agenda Item Number Three on our regular agenda, the discussion and possible action related to the recommendation of Professor Emeritus Status to Dr. Evangeline Deleon. So I'm going to ask Dr. Jonda Halcom to come forward and to please lead that portion of our, of our agenda.
Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskamia, I'm pleased today to present Dr. Vanji Deleon to you for consideration of Emeritus Status. Emeritus Status is a distinction that is reserved for those faculty who have shown distinguished service, significant contributions to higher education, meritorious teaching, and special honors. Emeritus Status is awarded only to a few on retirement. This is a very important and very distinguished honor. Your packet contains the policy covering the eligibility for consideration of Emeritus Status and the process for nominations. Eligibility for the award of Emeritus Status includes distinction in the areas of faculty fundamental responsibilities, including professional service or professional practice, educational growth, and institutional and community service. Your packet lists the areas of distinguished service. Within the body of the resolution that I will read shortly, there will be a list of examples of her exemplary service. A person upon receiving Emeritus Status will gain privileges such as being listed in the college catalog, being on mailing list, receiving a permanent identification card, invitations to participate in commencement ceremonies, and recognition activities. Our faculty Emeritus consideration today was recommended by the dean, the faculty council, and the chief academic officer following the outlined policy and procedures. I'm going to read a resolution in recognition of Evangeline Deleon, which highlights her achievements, and then I will ask the Board of Regents to accept the resolution and confer Emeritus Status on Dr. Evangeline Deleon. Vanji, could you come forward, please? Whereas Dr. Evangeline Deleon, professor of nurse education, served as an exemplary tenured educator among her peers and students in the college for 26 years, from 1995 to 2021. Whereas Dr. Deleon was recognized for her admirable dedication to higher education by receiving the National Institute for Staff and Organizational Development, NISOD Excellence Award in 1997. She successfully collaborated to secure external funding to meet the needs of the nurse education department through the Texas Workforce Commission Nursing Mentorship Grant, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Nursing Innovation Grant of Building Lab and Simulation Capacity for Nurse Education, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Statewide At-Risk Tracking and Intervention for Nurses Grant, and the Nursing Shortage Reduction Program Grant. Dr. Deleon's accomplishments in nurse education are further evidenced by her collaboration to establish the Bachelor of Science in Nursing RN to BSN degree and the Nursing Success Center at Delmar College. Whereas Dr. Deleon provided committed service and leadership to the college as the Department Chair of Nurse Education from 2012 to 2021, and a Program Director of Nurse Education from 2010 to 2012. She was an active member of the Chairs Council, the Academic Standards Committee, and numerous other institutional committees. Her contributions to Delmar College and the community were invaluable, including participation in Citywide Health Fair, the statewide health occupation Students of America Conference, the American Heart Association Go Red for Women Campaign, Corpus Christi Hypertension Collaborative, Family Ministries, Moody High School Health Science Academy Advisory Committee, and the Coastal Bend Regional Science Fair. To continuously enhance her expertise, Dr. Deleon maintained active membership in notable organizations such as Sigma Theta, the Texas Community College Teachers Association, and many other nursing-related organizations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar College Board of Regents formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation for service to our college and community by recognizing Dr. Deleon with the title of Professor Emeritus on this day, April 12th, 2022. I will now ask for you to accept this resolution and confer Emeritus Status for Dr. Evangeline Deleon.
Thank you very much, Dr. Halcom. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Adami. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, let's see, Dr. Villarreal, I think I heard her loudest. Dr. Deleon, thank you so much for your leadership in our, our school of nursing. It is, I'm going to speak that I think it is the culmination of your career to have received approval for our bachelor's program, our first bachelor program, to be for the school of nursing. And your leadership, I know, make that, made that happen. So thank you for your dedicated service. I am very sorry to see you go. You appear to be way too young to retire. But we, we so appreciate your dedication to our students and to the college. Are there other Regents who would like to say something? Dr. Adami?
Dr. Deleon, thank you very much for your hard work. And of course, I've had the privilege of working with you with the Citywide Health Fair. And I saw the dedication you have for Delmar and the tenants of Delmar. Thank you very much for keeping with the mission and a, you're going to be greatly missed.
Thank you, Dr. Adami.
Any other comments? I'm to stay there because you're going to get to say something in a minute. But all those in favor of the resolution to bestow the title Professor Emeritus on Dr. Vanji Deleon, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Dr. Deleon.
Thank you so much. I'm, I wasn't going to get emotional, but that's what we all say. I'm deeply humbled and I accept the honor with much gratitude. I thank Dr. Eskamia, you know, the Regents. I thank administration, my deans, Jennifer Schrammick, you know, Dr. Lee, all the deans that I served under that trusted me in my leadership and gave me the support that we needed in order to achieve success in our department. And it is, you know, Dr. Adami, as you say, it is the dedication and the passion that I have always had and that our faculty in this department continue to share with me. So I am again just with just the deepest gratitude and I assure you that I will continue to support the aspirations of Delmar College even in retirement. I am too young, but sometimes, you know, family calls and, and you have to be there and, and that's, that's what I did. But I truly have a heart and I, I just was so immensely appreciative of the fact that I was able to hang on to teach the first class to the RN to BSN program and I'm just, was just thrilled and I hope to continue to, to do that as time continues. So thank you. I still recall the day that Dr. Eskamia stopped me in the hall and said, "You ready to start that RN to BSN?" I said, "Yes, sir. We're on it." We were way ahead of the ball. We were. Thank you so much and I will deeply miss Delmar College, but we'll stay in touch. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. With that segue, we are going to move back to our regular agenda, which is going to begin with recognitions. And first is going to be the Next Generation Leadership Academy. And I kind of did this on purpose because I think there can be no better example of leadership than our Professor Emeritus Honories, and today that being Dr. Deleon. But what a wonderful way to segue into our next generation of academic leaders at Delmar College.
Thank you, Chair. I totally agree. The college continues to partner with Civitas Learning for the Next Generation Leadership Academy with Class III. Dr. Natalie Villarreal and I, we co-lead this initiative. NGLA is a year-long program that is offered and coordinated with the college to support and develop leaders in higher education. This class began its journey in November and is scheduled to complete in July. They are meeting using a hybrid model this session. They meet some in person and also some virtual sessions. Actually, they just came out of a virtual session right before they came into a board meeting. It is my pleasure to recognize and introduce to you Class III participants. So I'm going to ask them, as I read your name, if you could stand and then you can sit back down while I read the class. I think we have a good part of the class here, so that's great. Okay, we're going to start with Michelle Avalos. Okay. Dara Betts. Michael Bratton. Charles Campbell. Kiwana Denson. Sharon Donovan Mitchell. Jessica Edwards. Angelica Gomez Johnson. Chad Hector. Renee Hunley. Catherine Kennedy. Lucy Kernan. Albert Longoria. Kayla Lopez. Celeste Morales. Mandy Overby. Luis Robles. Robert Ruiz. Shane Stewart. Jeanette Viera. Anna Villegas. And Kathleen Westergren. I would also like to thank Lisa Leal Garcia. She is a grad from Class II and she accepted the opportunity and added responsibility of being the class liaison and mentor for Class III, and she's doing an outstanding job, so we want to thank her. Now Renee Hunley is going to come up. She is Class III spokesperson and she would like to address the board.
Madam Chair, members of the Board of Regents, and President Dr. Eskamia, on behalf of the Next Generation Leadership Academy, I'd like to say thanks, a big thank you, for partnering with Civitas. The benefit of the NGLA program extends beyond building a leader and focuses on building leaders. In the past seven modules, our class has learned the history and traditions of the education system, how similar problems we face in higher education have been tackled in the past, new and innovative ways of approaching continuing and emerging challenges. But most importantly, NGLA provides our cohort with tools, confidence, and training to help us do our part in fulfilling the Delmar College mission. The NGLA is congruent with the 2019-2024 Strategic Plan in guiding our cohort to create and develop an engaging, effective, and student-focused environment. The investment Delmar College has placed in us as employees will result in increasing the ability to provide holistic and quality service to our current students, our potential students, and our community. And for that, our cohort thanks you and the community thanks you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing us to recognize this group. This is above and beyond their normal work duties and they really, they do have homework. So we do want to thank them for that added responsibility and opportunity for them. And good luck. Thank you. Congratulations to you all and thank you for being here today. Dr. Eskamia?
I'd just like to also thank Tammy McDonald for, for leading this from the executive level to, to making sure that this, this process, this investment in our, in our very own most valuable resource, our human resource, are, are receiving this benefit. And again, this is the third class in. You put in all that extra work too, Tammy. I want to thank you and Dr. Villarreal for the work you've done in the past to get us to this point. Mark Millar, Dr. Mark Millar, Dr. Gerardo de Lo Santos, those are the key, the principles, if you will, of the program that come in and facilitate this, this learning of leadership, teaching of leadership and, and development of leadership. And I think you all said it best, you know, it's about developing leaders. We were just talking about the importance of leadership and the difference it makes at our lunch break. Just congratulations to each one of you all. We're very proud of you all. Thank you.
And we are proud to support this program. There are several of us on the dais who have participated in various leadership programs, either professionally or through community programs. So I personally can attest to my support of these kinds of programs within the organization. Congratulations. And how many other folks in the audience have participated at NGLA? So I thought a good deal of our staff, yes. Congratulations. Thank you all for being here. I know that you have other duties today and so if some of you are going to stick around, that's great. Some of you have to quietly sneak out. That is okay, too. We certainly appreciate that. So thank you again for being here. Any other questions or comments from board members on this recognition item? Congratulations from us all. Thanks again. We're going to move on to our Student Success Report and bring Dr. Jonda Halcom back to talk about our Community College Survey of Student Engagement data.
There we go. Okay, Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskamia, our student success highlight today is a portion of the Community College Survey of Student Engagement. And I'm just focusing on questions that students were asked that are related to gen, general education. Also known as CSE, this gives us the student's voice and that's very important to have our student voice. And so in, this is in a variety of areas and it helps us to improve our student learning, persistence, attainment. It identifies where we can improve our programs and services. But overall, it's very important for listening to the students and their experiences. As I mentioned, I'm only presenting some data on questions relating to general education today. CSE is quite extensive and perhaps it will warrant some more discussion at a later time on other areas. But we're looking at specifically the areas of gen ed as critical thinking, communication, empirical, and quantitative reasoning, teamwork, social responsibility, and personal responsibility. We assess two of these competencies, competencies each year. As, and general education assessment is extremely important and our SAC COC report is one of our standards as well. So gen ed areas, very critical. So just a little bit first before I delve into some of the data. CSE is administered every two years. Any student over 18 years of age is eligible to complete the CSE. In 2021, the survey was administered completely online for the first time. 852 students completed the survey, which is 13% of the total eligible population. This is comparable to the percentage that other colleges have for participation. So let's take a look at some of the questions that students were asked in the general education area and you'll see that we are higher in each category in 2021 as compared to the national average. Students have increased their positive answers to questions indicated, in my mind, that we're improving and doing a good job in these areas. So we see here for critical thinking and analyzing the basic elements of an idea, experience, or theory, once again, we're above the national average. We've stayed pretty steady in those experiences between 2017 and 2021. Forming a new idea or understanding from various pieces of information, you can see we're steadily improving the experiences for our students and we are above that national average there as well. Making judgments about the value of soundness of information, arguments, or methods, we're better than the national average, but I think we can increase there. And so we do need to, I think, increase the experiences for our students in that category. Then next, under critical thinking, and critical thinking is so important for all of our students, so that's why I'm focusing two slides on critical thinking. But applying theories or concepts to practical problems or in new situations, you can see we've increased those experiences as well and once again, we're above the national average. Using information, you have read or heard to perform a new skill, we are about 73.4. That is once again above national average. Thinking critically, analytically, we've steadily improved there as well. And then we go to communication, writing clearly and effectively, or speaking clearly and effectively. We are much better than the national average in speaking clearly and effectively. And once again, this is what's promising. We're seeing increases in those experiences among our students. That's very important. Empirical and quantitative reasoning, solving numerical problems. We know that, we've talked so much during Christina Wilson's workshops about mathematics and so, but you'll see here that students are getting a lot of experiences, experiences in solving numerical problems. And so we are a little bit above that national average there as well. Teamwork, we're doing well on teamwork. And then social responsibility, I'm a bit concerned about we're not, the students are not getting experiences in community-based projects as much as I think perhaps we could, but it's pretty much the national average. So you can see many of the other institutions do not have a lot of those community-based projects at the community college level that students are experiencing either. And then encouraging contact among students from different economic, social, racial, or ethnic backgrounds, we're, we're slowly improving those experiences for students. And then personal responsibility, learning effectively on your own, 82.4%, much above the national average and once again, showing improvement there. Now I also have Dr. Wilson here. If you have more questions about CSE, it does come out, these, the CSE report is on their webpage in Institutional Research. And they did compile this report for the Student Success Report today, so if you do have some additional questions about CSE, myself or Dr. Wilson could help answer those. Did you have any questions today?
I don't see any. Thank you very much, Dr. Halcom.
I think it's very interesting to see what students think and their experiences, very much so. Thank you so much.
And I appreciate the data over time as well to get the comparison piece. Thank you very much for that. All right, we'll move into our College President's Report. Dr. Eskamia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief, but I am pleased to say that our efforts to return to campus are being, are going to be demonstrated in a couple of events, and I think more than a couple of events over time, but certainly in the near future as the college continues to refill its halls at, at all locations, that we will, we will begin to even celebrate some opportunities together. Today, today's attendance was evidence of our return and it just felt really, really good to see, you know, the faculty, staff, and administrators in here today. So that, just one more example that we're living. Coming up will be a celebration that has been put off for a couple of years with our, one of our newest buildings, and that is the General Academic Music Phase II Building. We'll have a ceremony, a dedication ceremony for the building as well as the Mike Anseldua Plaza here at the, well, across the street, down the way at the Heritage Campus at 10:00 AM Thursday, April 21st. This ceremony will be held outdoors in the Anseldua Plaza. And again, as I mentioned, it's been woefully delayed, but, but we, we hung on to it and we're looking forward to a, a great celebration of an absolutely beautiful space and, and celebrating a wonderful colleague in Dean Emeritus, Mike Anseldua. Also, as another piece of, of our coming back to, a piece of the puzzle of coming back to campus, so to speak, is, is another tremendous opportunity in, in returning to our spring commencement in a face-to-face fashion. What a wonderful thing. The college is excited to hold its first in-person commencement ceremony in over two years, Friday, May 20th, at the American Bank Center. Our keynote speaker will be Dr. Osbert Blow, President and Chief Medical Officer for Kristis Bond Health System. You know, I think we thought it was very fitting, first of all, we're very grateful for Dr. Blow's acceptance of this offer and we thought it was very fitting since the, the community's health being so much at the forefront of our conversation that we get one of our medical leaders out there to, to bring us back, so to speak. And so it's going to be a wonderful thing. One more quick update. I just wanted to let everyone know from a, from a legislative standpoint, we are preparing for next legislative session in earnest and, and especially in the way of the Texas Community College Commission on Community College Finance. And I continue, as, as well as Chair Scott, continue to attend those meetings and, and make those a, a very high priority in that we are able to be at the table to make decisions about how community colleges are financed. I want you to know we're through the first milestone as it's been set out by the commission and by our chairman, Mr. Woody Hunt, Commissioner Harrison, Commissioner of Higher Education, Harrison Keller. And so we're, we are making progress and I just wanted to update you and let you know that, you know, I think we're about a third of the way through in terms of our initial work. And then the work really will begin in earnest at the next legislative session when we start justifying our recommendations to our elected officials. So that concludes my reports. I'm glad to answer any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any questions for Dr. Eskamia? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's move on to our staff reports and we will begin with Mr. Garcia talking to us about submission of our annual budget for the GFOA participation in distinguished budget award. I think that's right.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board. The college has a history of issuing multiple financial award-winning reports. The college is now pursuing a new award from the GFOA, Government Financial Officers Association, for the college's annual 2020 budget book. This new version is a comprehensive report that I believe further illustrates the college's financial resource allocation to our operating activities in support of the college's strategic vision. Dr. West, Dr. Wilson, and team is credited for this huge undertaking. The team is here today with a few reporting highlights. Dr. West will now lead us into this discussion.
Thank you, Raul. The annual budget report team, Dr. Christina Wilson, Jackie Landrum, and Dr. Carlos Garanzway, welcome the opportunity today to give you all some updates on our new and improved annual budget report that we submitted to the GFOA for the first time since 2016. So what we're going to do is we're going to give you a brief background of GFOA reporting at Delmar College for those of you that are rather new, and then go over the distinguished budget award, and then give you some highlights of the items that we had to include to be able to meet the criteria. Oh, what happened? I don't know what I did. Oh, okay. Sorry. Oh, what did I do? Am I doing? I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry. I usually use the mouse. Okay. Okay, here we go. Okay, so first of all, a brief background on the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA. It's a public finance association of officials that are involved in the planning and the financing and implementing governmental operations. I've included the mission for you on the slide, and they provide best practices, guidance, network opportunities, and publications and training, which we rely heavily on here at Delmar College. A brief background, we have participated in three of these awards for excellence in financial reporting here at Delmar since 2010, for both the annual comprehensive financial report and the popular annual financial report, which, by the way, there, that is prepared by college relations. We have received 11 years' worth of awards of excellence for these reports. And then we also started out with the budget report in 2010, but in 2016, the GFOA set up, or tried to set up, a program that was especially designed for community colleges, and so we could no longer participate in the distinguished budget. But what happened was that the magnitude of requirements and policies that they expected colleges to do in order to receive the award was really more than any of the colleges in the United States were prepared to do. So everyone quit participating, and as did we. So when they saw that everybody wasn't going to participate anymore, they were, they decided to let the community colleges come back in to the distinguished budget award so that we could again participate. However, by this time, they had made several updates to the, the award requirements. So back in April of 2021, we assembled a team from both fiscal services and planning and institutional effectiveness, Raul, Garcia, John Johnson, Jackie Landerman, myself, and then Dr. Christina Wilson, Dr. Sidney Songby, and Dr. Carlos Garanzway. And now what we're going to do is give you some highlights of what we had, the updates that we had to make in order, which were quite significant, by the way, in order to be able to participate in this program. First of all, I wanted to give you some of the, the focus of the GFOA program, and as we have been doing in our budget process every year, being sure that we tie our resources to the strategic plan, they also want everyone to explain your budget and financial structure. You know, governmental accounting is a different animal from regular enterprise-type accounting, and so they wanted people to identify funds, revenue strings, and expense categories, incorporate long-term planning into the report, and also enhance the understanding and the usability for the reader. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Christina Wilson to go over the strategic goals and strategies.
Thank you. Good afternoon. As Kathy explained, the report required a demonstration of the alignment between the college's strategic plan and the budget. Specifically, we needed to describe the college's strategic goals and how they were derived. Then we were required to demonstrate, or describe, the strategies and actions that the college had taken and will take to reach those goals. As part of this section of the report, we described the process that our Board of Regents and our internal and external stakeholders took part in during 2018 and 2019 as we developed our current strategic plan. The process included several workshops with our regents, focus groups and surveys with our internal stakeholders, and surveys with additional external stakeholder groups. We utilized several frameworks for identifying priorities, including an environmental analysis, a SWOT analysis, which stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Some of you are remembering the many hours we took to complete these, and a STEEP analysis, which looks at social, technological, environmental, economic, and political influences. Our strategic planning committee then utilized the information collected and provided from our stakeholders to identify the goals, KPIs, objectives, and strategies that are now reflected in our strategic plan. I will now hand the floor over to Jackie Landrum, who will describe the goals and objectives section of the report.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So part of the requirements from GFOA is that we created a section on those departmental goals and objectives. So we included in this section a position summary statement that shows all the full-time position counts for the entire college for the last two years and the current year, along with the change from fiscal year '21 to '22. We also discussed our staffing level changes in this section for fiscal year '21 to '22. So the GFOA required that we had a clear presentation of the organization. So we provided an organizational division summary, and each of these summaries were completed at the VP level with an individual summary that provided a description of the function for each of those areas and how they support the college. We also included areas that report to those divisions, along with a description of their function as well. So another requirement of the GFOA was to include clearly stated goals and objectives of the departments that showed that relationship between the department objectives and the college's strategic plan. So this was provided in a chart that is included in each of those department summaries. So we provided measures that included outputs and individual, for each of the individual departments to provide a meaningful way to assess their effectiveness and their efficiency. We also included targets for fiscal year 2021, what they achieved in that year, and what their target was for fiscal year 2022. So over the last three years, we've worked very closely with Dr. Wilson and her team to really tie the budget with the college's strategic plan, and since we've been doing that, gathering this information for this report was relatively easy because we had all that data in our unit assessment system improve. And Dr. Carlos Garanzway is going to discuss this a little bit more.
Hello. The college's 2019-24 strategic plan provides an adaptable guide for all internal elevations of our organization to align departmental priorities in order to support the overlying aspirations of the college. As reporting units account annually on the efforts to achieve those priorities, we learn how to improve our service to students, to the community, and to each other. Annual reports provide clear plans that outline how reporting units intend to improve their functionality and effectiveness, as well as the findings of those plans. Reporting units can provide far more than a quantitative read of accomplishing targets. Each unit has the opportunity to explain through narrative substantiated reasoning behind decisions made. The report is one way our departments have actualized and maintained a collaborative relationship with the budget office. The benefits from sourcing, the robust data from the strategic plan, and assessment efforts are abundant, and we value the opportunity to continue supporting the budget office in future projects. Our ability to improve has been significantly amplified because of the collaborations. Now, Dr. West will discuss the budget structure.
Okay, so these are elements that, or sections that we had to include in the report to, in order to meet the award requirements, and we're going to just briefly touch on each one, and Jackie will talk about next segment.
So for the budget process section, the GFOA required a clear, concise narrative that described our budget process, including an explanation of relevant legal and policy requirements. So to meet these requirements, we provided a narrative that describes our budget development process. It included policy requirements and our five phases of our budget process. Each of those phases were described, along with how we monitor the budget throughout the year. So we also provided a budget calendar that was color-coordinated with our budget process visual that we just saw. So now, Dr. West will discuss the budget structure and functions.
Okay, and this, these are the components that must be in the book to explain your different items of your budgetary structure and functions, your budgetary basis, revenue and expenditure categories identified. And another part that we put in here, which I think will be helpful to the reader, is defining our fund structure, which in governmental accounting, again, is different, a little different from your other types of accounting. So we have defined and described each of our major funds that we use here at the college. Another section that we added was a entire section on budget and financial policies, and I've listed the ones that you will find that are central to strategic long-term approach to financial management. And if you remember, as a part of this process, we brought the debt management policy to you to approve in December. Okay, now Jackie will take on this section.
So in the introduction section of the report is our budget message from Mr. Garcia. So GFOA required that we highlight principal issues facing the college while developing the budget. These issues included any economic factors, regulatory and legislative challenges, and then priorities for the budget were explained, along with trends and major revenue and expenditure components. And in this section, it also described any action and changes needed to address the issues and priorities of the college's budget. So the GFOA required an overview of the significant budgetary items and trends to be presented with the budget, and it is intended to help readers quickly understand major budgetary items and trends. It also required a summary of major revenue and expenditures to provide an overview of the total resources budgeted by the college. We were required to provide information for at least three budget periods, so we included fiscal year 2020, '21, and '22, along with a description of these changes. So we used graphs to communicate the operating revenue and expense budget for fiscal year 2022, and we also provided statements for further detail. So for the operating fund, we provided an income statement that represents the college's actual revenue and expenditures for the last two years, along with the budget for last year and the current year. The expenditures by function statement represents the expenses by each of the major functions of the college, such as instruction, academic support, and student services. So the expenditures by object summary statement, that represents the expenses by the object summary, and those are those same categories that you see on our monthly financial reports. We also provided a statement on the summary of changes in our fund balance that represents each of the college's funds, and now that, how they have changed over the last two years, and how they were budgeted last year and this year. Income states were provided for all funds, which represents the actuals for the last two years and the budget for fiscal year '21 and '22. The information we provided in this section provides the reader with a way to quickly understand our major budgetary items and trends. So for our long-term financial planning section, the GFOA required the identification of long-range operating financial plans that extend at least two years beyond the budget. So assumptions were to be identified and a discussion included so that the reader could clearly understand the key points of the projections. So financial projections had to go beyond just the general fund, so we included projections for the operating fund, the debt service fund, and the auxiliary fund. Challenges and priorities were identified during the process by completing an environmental scan, reviewing regulatory challenges and policy issues, and then assumptions that were used to develop the forecast included salary increases that were planned, anticipated inflation rates, and the priorities that were identified that support the college's strategic plan. So although the GFOA really only required us to do a three-year forecast, we did provide them with a five-year forecast. So now, Dr. West will discuss the capital programs.
Okay, and these last two slides are just other sections that we've included. I think this new section on the capital programs, since we are very capital intense right now, we describe our capital improvement program, also define what are capital expenditures, and then we also in there have a summary of both of the bond projects, 14 and 16, and it will give you the budgets for those, all the projects, by detail project, and then where we're at on actual expenditures as of the end of the fiscal year. Then there are other sections in, in the report that, that we won't go over today, but here's an example of a few more areas where you will find additional information. And now, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much. I am going to make an assumption that the board member's not physically present today. We'll get this wonderful book delivered in short order. Thank you. That's very comprehensive, and I like the, again, the initial read, just thumbing through it during the course of the meeting today, it looks very accessible, and look forward to digging into a little bit more. Other questions or comments for the team? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. We will now move on to our student enrollment report. Patricia Benavides Dominguez is with us today, Lenora Keys. I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett, did you have any questions? I see you on the screen. I always want to make sure that if you have anything, you call on you.
I see me as well. I'm not sure how I got there.
Sorry. Patricia and Lenora were slated to give this presentation. Lenora is not with us today, so Patricia is standing on her own two feet. She can do it.
I'll be pinch-hitting for Lenora today.
There we go.
I control it right? Okay. Okay, thanks. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Regents. Today, we'll be reviewing the student enrollment report for '21-'22. An overview of the enrollment is what we're going to be, is what I'm going to share with you today, begins with an, the impact of the COVID-19 nationwide, explanation of state of Texas biennium, base year for contact hours, formula funding, credit headcount, contact hours, including an update on dual credit, then ending with the annual contact hour update for the fall and spring semesters for both continuing education and corporate services. Additionally, the May board presentation will provide strategies regarding the strategic enrollment management plan and other initiatives to include Oso Creek Campus. The impact of COVID-19 over the past two years is evident by comparing the change in enrollment across the state and nation. As you can see, the college compares to the decline in enrollment for fall 2020-'21 semesters. A similar trend across both the state of Texas and the nation occurred in the spring semesters. It is significant that both the Delta and Omicron variant were at their high points at the beginning of the fall '21 and spring '22 semesters. This next section of the presentation will review the impact that enrollment has on the revenue derived from state appropriations. State appropriations are determined every two years in the biennium and make up 15.6% of the overall budget. of the overall budget, with the state, with an additional state benefit towards employee benefits of 5.3%. An additional 23.4% of the budget comes from tuition and fees, a total of 44.3 direct impact from enrollment. A critical point in time to the college is the base year as defined by the Texas Legislature. This is the point in time that the contact hours for which each student enrolls becomes the basis for funding for the next two years, or the biennium. It is important to note that the college is funded from the state on contact hours, not credit hours earned by the student. Base year calendar. This base year calendar period is different for credit courses and continuing education. This February began the base year for credit courses for the next biennium. The credit courses' base year contact hours will be determined by the enrollment that runs February 2022 through the beginning of Spring '23, the 16-week term, and the first eight-week term. Conversely, the continuing education base year began March 2022 and will run through the registration period ending February '23, and is on a quarterly basis. The enrollment that is taking place for the coming year will determine the funding for the next academic years of Fall '23, '24, and Fall '24, '25. The base year funding for the past four bienniums has increased due to the increase in contact hours and student success formula funding. This slide shows the combined impact of contact hours earned for credit and continuing education We always like to compare ourselves to our peer colleges. This slide shows the funding in each category: core operations, student success, contact hours, and CE contact hours. This slide shows how formula funding impacts contact hours, student success points, and core operations for the '22, '23 biennium. This slide shows how formula funding has changed over time. As you can see, the rate fluctuates depending on the legislative approval. This slide shows the base year funding for the biennium, beginning with 2014, 2015 current year, to the current year. The funding shows that we are down in credit contact hours by 7.1%, but up 29% in continuing education contact hours. When we combine the two, we are down overall 4.1%. Student success funding. This graph is a review of how colleges receive success points. Texas Community College receives success points after a student reaches certain milestones, such as completing developmental work, earning 15 credits, 30 credits, and earning a credential. This chart compares Delmar College to the other large colleges across the state. It shows how it varies on academic years. This accounts for up to 10% of our funding from the state. These next slides, we will now transition into fall headcount enrollment. As you can see, we are down 2.36% for Fall '21. Fall credit headcount. This chart is a good representation of the students' enrollment pattern between Fall 2019 and Fall 2021. Our decrease in enrollment aligns with the state and the nation, as we've shown in earlier slides. The flex enrollment shown here is comprised of a variety of terms, such as our eight-week courses, minis, maymaster. DMC tripled the amount of courses offered in the second eight weeks. This strategy increased the flex headcounts from Fall 2019 and Fall 2020 Flex. The Fall '21 Flex enrollment represented here is comprised of a variety of terms. That enrollment is carried into the spring numbers, and you will see that on the next slide. Prior to the beginning of Fall '21 term, the Omicron variant was prevalent in our community, and we feel this impacted our momentum. Spring credit headcount. This bar graph is our state enrollment, is our state-reported data for spring credit headcount, and includes flex entry. The Fall '21 will continue to, in Fall '21, we will continue to focus on eight weeks. This time, we added 1,700 flex students. As you can see, this makes a difference. This slide shows the Fall 2020 to Fall '21 enrollment percentages of our cohort colleges across the state. Delmar College experienced a 2.7 decline from Fall '20 to Fall '21. The cohort ranges from a negative 13.2 to a positive 90.4. However, the 90.4 reported by Laredo Community College is a reporting error. As a note, the colleges with the smallest decline, Amarillo, South Plains, and Tyler, all have student housing and a younger student average age. This slide shows the spring enrollment percentages for our cohort colleges across the state. As you can see, the pandemic has been a challenge for our sister colleges as well. It is important to note that the numbers do not include flex numbers, as we have been discussing. Spring '22 coordinating board numbers are preliminary. This bar graph provides a historical perspective of our credit contact overview from 2015, 2016 to current year. This chart illustrates a steady increase in the contact hours for the first five academic years and in the last two years. You see a slight decline as a result of the ongoing pandemic. Fall dual credit headcount. The dual credit program continues to grow. As this bar graph indicates, there has been a five-year increase of 11.7% and a significant decrease of 6.96 from the last year. We currently have 36 high schools participating in our dual credit programs. This dual credit slide provides a headcount for spring terms. As this bar graph indicates, there has been a five-year increase of 9.4% and a .07 decrease for Spring '21, which is two enrollments down. The dual credit staff has done a phenomenal job building relationships with our ISD colleagues. This slide provides a historical perspective on continuing education contact hours, beginning with the academic 2016, '17 through 2021. The coordinating board has not released continuing education enrollment data for '21, '22. This bar graph provides a historical perspective on the continuing education full-time equivalent count from academic year 2016, 2017 to the most current certified year of 2020, 2021. This is an update of contact hours and combined credit and continuing education academic year, beginning with Fall '15 to current academic year. We are only part of the way through this year at this point. Continuing education is on a quarter system, with only two quarters being counted. However, the college continues to enroll students in eight-weeks minis and maymasters. A summer session and fall session is fully underway right now to complete this academic year. It is anticipated that the academic year will be similar to 2020, 2021, slightly lower to the impact of COVID-19. This concludes the enrollment presentation. Do we have any questions?
I have a question related to the fall and spring dual credit headcount numbers. So over time, are we pretty steady in the number of high schools that we work with, or has that increased significantly over the past five years as well?
It's been pretty steady. We sometimes lose a high school and then gain it a couple of years later, and then gain another one. So it just, it just varies, but between 35 to, I would say between 33 to 36 is usually in, is our range of high schools that we, that we work with.
Okay. And over that period, same period of time, then how much has the actual student population in those high schools changed?
It changed, you know, as Laredo, I mean, Laredo, London is starting to pick up enrollment. It also changed when Veterans High School was created, and King and Carroll both fluctuated in enrollment and pulled to Veterans High School. So there's been a shift. Also been a shift in Flower Bluff coming up, and same thing with some shifts in the GP area.
So is that a change in the actual number of, so, okay, so obviously, London and Veterans Memorial would have been new high schools, but those students came from high schools that we already had existing relationships with, they just moved. So they weren't new students, unless they came out of the private school sector. I was trying to get a sense of, over time, if our numbers are hovering around 2,500 students, maybe a little bit lower in Fall of '21, but if our numbers hover around 2,500 students, is that the same number out of a growing population of high school students, or is that the same number out of a decreasing? What, what market share do we have of our possible high school students who could take dual credit? If our numbers are steady, is the enrollment also steady, and therefore, we're not growing? Which is fine. I'm just trying to understand the market share of what we have.
If I can jump in there. I think that the percentage of the students, the 2,500 number was, was, well, I'll just tell you, the 2,800 number, just a few short years ago, is we were, we were headed for 3,000, and 3,000 is a goal that I've had, kind of a personal goal for the college for a very long time. And the decline from the 2,800, the loss of momentum from the 2,800 to the 2,500 right there is a story and an anomaly in itself. So I think, I think the market share is still there. I think we lost, we're developing a different group, a different type of student, as CTE dual enrollment classes are growing. And, and so I think that is an area that is, that is growing significantly. I think the market share is still there. I think just the lack of participation and the difficulty that has come by way of, of the challenges of everything going on at the various school districts has really hampered that number. I think the opportunity and the raw number of students is still before us. I heard, I heard personal accounts from the London night, was biggest college, biggest dual credit night that they'd ever had, by the way. I have family there, and I got that good report. So I, I think the market share is still there. It's just really a dynamic of, of families being able to take one more thing on at the high school level. That's just, that's just anecdotal, I know, but I don't think that, if, if the school districts have shrunken, the private schools have, have picked them up, and we are partners with them as well, such as the School for Science and Technology and so forth.
And we also have significant homeschool enrollment as well. So any one that we lose from a traditional high school setting, we typically gain in homeschool enrollment.
I think we're just at the, I think we're at the, if we're not at the bottom in terms of just kind of the slowing down, the loss of momentum, I think if we're not at the bottom, we're close to the bottom, because I know that the numbers of students, we haven't lost that population here, they're here somewhere. And, and I think that's typical. You know, we're, we're responding, families are responding similarly throughout the state and the country.
I also think that once the school districts kind of settle down post-COVID, and I think you'll see a lot more students coming back, because I know the restructuring. A lot of eighth-grade students, half their eighth grade is now high school classes, and they're restructuring and they're following the same pathways as Delmar is. I think you'll see a streamlined presence there, and I know a lot of the high schools are developing programs that will funnel into Delmar, and I think that partnership's going to grow in the future.
I'd also like to add that legislatively, that this is a topic of tying in the K through 12 with the community colleges like never before is a very high priority. And I know I've been working very closely with the Senate higher, Chair of Higher Ed slash Public Ed Chairman, and, and that is very much on, on the minds of the leadership there. It's how, how are we finally going to tie our pathways with those endorsements and balance out the, what are the IBCs, ICBs?
IBC is at Ray High School. They're a lone Roman school.
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. The, oh, course-based, oh, competencies, oh, golly, I'm missing all my, no, 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 I apologize. Anyway, tying all the loose ends, okay, so obviously, the loose ends up in my head right now. Anyway, but anyway, tie up loose ends so that we can, so we can bring those pipelines together like never before. That's what's, that's what's missing and hindering these numbers, frankly.
Additionally, last week, Dr. Halcom and myself and the academic deans and the dual credit staff and Gracie Martinez, we had a, another meeting, a quarterly meeting that we had with CCISD, which is our biggest ISD that we recruit from. And part of the conversation, because of the guided pathways, is that we need students to, we shared with them their data, and we also like to be competitive. I shared with them their other ISDs around here, their data about who they're graduating, who's earning a credential, who earned the credential while in high school, who earned the credential after high school, and tightening up that, that gap. And definitely, we made it known that we wanted them to exit high school with either earning core credit, or a credential, or an associate's degree. And we also tied in the guided pathways of, like, before, I felt like dual credit was like, like to steal a term from John Dehalcom, the wild, wild west. Let me just take this course because I can. Let me just take this course because I'm going for rank. And we can't have, like, you know, thank goodness, Kim James and I are on the same page, and I told her, we can't have credits to nowhere, because it's going to kill us with Senate Bill 1531, which is, you know, taking more courses and hours than you need, and also time to completion. So, and they don't want to pay for extra courses that students don't need. So they have to, students need to choose a path, and if you don't know your path, stick with core.
Yes, so I found my thoughts, and it has to do with all these loose ends that you're talking about, Vice President Dominguez. And so it's the industry-based certifications versus, and the misalignment with our own, you know, Level 1 and Level 2 certificates, they're not even linked up on the workforce side. So there's, there's, we've got conflict there as well. So certainly, on the transfer side, you know, the efficiencies that we don't have in these students that are, you know, chalking up all these hours is what we've got to work on so that we're identifying and/or letting them explore at an earlier age. We know eighth graders aren't going to, to the 90-something percentile, aren't going to choose what they want to be, but they're going to choose an area of interest and start talking about it earlier, and that interest will develop over those four years, as opposed to, you know, sophomore, end of sophomore year, junior year, well, what do you want to be when you grow up? Instead of having that conversation. That's what all these loose ends are about, is getting it in, tying them together, and having developmental, kind of, kind of developmental conversations, if you will.
And part of it is also educating the parents in this community, because when you have a student from Veterans High School that tells you, that made an A in college algebra, very bright, but I want to take elementary stats just because I can, because I'm going for rank, right? But then when we talk to the parents and go, are you going to make, are you going to pay for extra college credit just because he wants to if he was at a university that wasn't on the degree plan? No. So why would you do it here? So it's, part of it is, is parent education as well. We can't have QEP advising and tell the 18 and plus population here on campus, stick to your degree plan, but then tell dual credit students, who are college students too, that they can do whatever they want. You know, they need to stick with their plan.
So to Chairwoman Scott's point about multi-year perspectives and the data that we showed on the, on the, on the financial side, you have that, that slide, you don't have to go back to, but you showed the slide. If you think of the, the number of students that we've been impacting over the past, I mean, the past, over, well over a decade, that's thousands and thousands and thousands of students. We are changing, fundamentally changing education here in this community by accessing, offering that access to students like never before. It's a compounding effect, it really is.
It's anecdotal, I had a conversation with a Del Mar College dual credit alum from Cal Allen at Fiesta de los Niños. And she talked about having what it meant to her family to be able to save thirty hours of tuition, to go on to Texas A&amp;M Kingsville and get a chemical engineering degree. And now she's an engineer at Flynn Hills Resources. And so she knew I was on the board at Del Mar College and she made a point of finding me at Fiesta de los Niños and saying, thank you very much for, uh, the board and for the, the college's dedication to dual credit and what it means to students like her, so.
Um, I have a quick question and forgive me for not knowing this. So all the school districts in our, um, in our areas, do we have partnerships with all of them that are within our boundaries?
Mm-hmm, yes ma'am, and some outside of our boundaries too.
Well, yeah, I knew, I, I definitely knew about some outside, but I didn't know for sure that all of them, uh, that, that's wonderful.
Yes ma'am.
Great points.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, let's, uh, take a look at our pending, uh, business, um, list. In May, we will hear, um, another internal audit report, uh, to the board as well as, uh, have a report on the staff compensation analysis that is occurring. At that point in time, Delia, help me calendar, uh, the conversation and the timetable for the president's evaluation. Want to make, want to get that, um, on the May agenda as well. And then in June, as Dr. Wilson told us earlier, we'll hear about Goals Four and Five, uh, in our Strategic Plan KPI Workshop. We'll also do our annual, or semi-annual review of con, professional contracts with the board as well as hear a HERF fund update. All right. Any questions on our pending business items? We'll move on to our consent agenda. We have, uh, two items in our consent agenda, or several, several minutes to approve as well as an acceptance of investment report. Uh, is there, uh, a motion to accept our consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Garza, motion by Mr. Kelly, second by Mr. Garza. Any public comment on our consent agenda item? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes. We'll now move on to item number four on our regular agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding the college's quarterly investment report. Mr. Garcia.
So today we have, uh, Mr. David McIlwain from Patterson and Associates, who will discuss the college's investment yields, investments performance and investment strategies in pursuit of higher yields. And, uh, Mr. McIlwain, is it still Patterson and Associates? Can you provide some clarity there?
Yes, well, it is, uh, morphed into, uh, Patterson Group. Linda has teamed up with a firm out of Ohio called Meter Investments. And so we're continuing to operate as a, uh, as our own independent subsidiary focused on Texas public funds. And they are the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the state of Ohio managing state funds in numerous cities and counties up in Ohio. So they're just trying to grow their presence in public funds, having acquired a West Coast presence and also a presence up in Michigan prior to, uh, merging with us here in Texas. So we are now rebranding as Patterson Group and, uh, you see the logo down there, still, you know, we go by either one, so.
The one in our packet says Meter Public Funds slash Patterson Group and the one on here, I guess was the earlier version, it says Patterson Associates, so.
Correct, correct. And, and so business cards and, and email, uh, you know, addresses are kind of just at the forefront of that Patterson Group. We're just kind of morphing that direction, but, uh, there's no plans for us to deviate from the Patterson name here in Texas, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And philosophically, we, uh, you know, we are still a little bit different animal than our, uh, parent company there, but we are a bigger, stronger, uh, enterprise now. We have our own team of analysts who, um, kind of add another layer of credit analysis to what we already get from, say Moody's, S&amp;P or Fitch. So, um, you know, the universe of, say, commercial paper programs that we can buy legally under Public Funds Investment Act, um, has typically maybe two hundred companies meet that criteria. And right now, I think we probably will only, uh, recommend about fifty to sixty of that universe of two hundred possibilities. So to get into the nuts and bolts of this latest quarter, um, does it toggle down? At the, uh, I don't want to click over to. The Eric keys, okay. All right. So it's just, all right. Yeah, so, um, obviously we've got a lot going on economically speaking. Um, we've got the Fed has finally, um, gone the opposite direction. It, it's been anticipated that, uh, with the, all the inflation, inflationary pressures that started creeping into the picture due to COVID, um, starting with the bottlenecks of goods trying to come in on the West Coast along with, you know, the lack of, uh, ability to get those containers off the ships, onto trucks, uh, onto rail and get them where they need to be in the country, has created to that inflation, inflationary pressure across the board. And then coupled with the fact with what's going on with Russia invading the Ukraine, it's added insult to injury to everybody who's got to, you know, gas up at the pump. Um, it's clearly, we got a reading, uh, on CPI today, um, that was actually the, you know, the most, the highest increase in CPI since nineteen eighty-one. So that's, that's been a while, that's four decades, right? And, um, obviously the Fed right now, the market has, the bond market has already, uh, anticipated what they think the Fed's going to do. We've seen a two-year treasury yield back in September, was it twenty basis points? Earlier, you know, going back fully a year ago, that two-year treasury yield was even less than twenty basis points. That two-year treasury yield today is about a two forty, which essentially is about nine Fed rate increases over the September, um, starting point. And we've only had one Fed rate increase. Uh, the Fed's going to meet again here in May. It's highly anticipated that they may do a fifty basis point increase versus the twenty-five they just did. Um, but that all, 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 everything that the Fed is going to do will more than likely, um, impact the very, very short end of the curve where we see money market funds rates will be kind of the last beneficiary of that. Two and three-year yields have already, uh, as we'll see on some charts ahead, are pricing in a, a pretty significant move by the Fed. But, um, one of the things the Fed has to be mindful of in trying to control inflation is too far, too fast will obviously push this country back into a recession. And so that's the tight rope they're trying to walk at the moment. So again, treasury rates are currently reflecting a lot of Fed activity. Uh, whether or not we're going to get eight to, you know, uh, eight Fed rate increases, time is going to tell, right? Um, and also a, a lot of the other economic data that has to follow. And again, this is just some depictions of, of how the, how the short end of the curve has already been impacted. Feel free to stop me and ask me a question, but I'm just going to kind of get through to the actual portfolio of the college here.
I'm going to actually hang on just a second because what is in our packet is not tracking with what's on the screen. So I'm trying to figure out, Mr. Garcia, what's tracking, what's in our packet is not tracking with what's on the screen. So which one should we be looking at?
I would just look at the screen, probably what's in your packet is the actual quarterly report. This is the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Is this your card?
Uh, all right.
Yeah.
Is there another PowerPoint that maybe could have been?
Okay.
No, I think y'all have the quarterly invest, the actual report is in your packet. But this is her PowerPoint.
Yeah, you know what, maybe, was there another PowerPoint that could have been chosen? Cause this is.
So what you're seeing is, you're, on the screen is portfolio as of eleven thirty-one twenty-one. What we have in our packet is as of two twenty-eight twenty-two.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, uh, yeah, cause I definitely was, uh, reviewing for two twenty-eight. Yeah, this. That is the one, that looks a little more familiar. Thanks for catching that, it's quite a little discrepancy. Am I in the driver's seat now? Should be able to tab now? Okay.
Okay, sorry about that, take two.
All right, take two.
Well, and again, I'm still not sure that that's the right one because the one we have is, is dated April, the very first, very first page is dated April twelfth. And this one's dated February twenty-eighth.
I think that April twelfth is the presentation date, today's date being. This should be.
The reporting as of February, right? Yeah, as of February.
All right.
So this report is your official quarterly report?
Right, that's the, yeah, yeah.
We, what they're saying, I think.
Oh, I see, you, yeah, you've moved on to the official report. If you could scroll back up in the packet to page, page one oh one.
So I think we're at, uh, page three one oh nine.
Yep.
Of your, your point.
All right.
I'm going to go straight to Board Effect on the website. We have the actual report, but then you should have a, it's a PDF this time, it's not a PowerPoint.
I just want to keep us all on the same page because when you start talking about some of this stuff, it goes above my head at least very quickly, so the visuals help.
Yeah, here it is, yeah, here's what you should have.
I know that was all a test, just to see if we're paying attention.
Pulling these straight from Board Effect. Regular agenda item four, should be this presentation right here. This is what I was given. Which is what's on Adobe.
Okay, that's your cover sheet. Okay, your next thing, what's your next thing? There you go, there, there you go.
That's it.
That's the PowerPoint, yeah. Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, you're completely fine, as long as we get it figured out for you guys. We just need to reshare that screen for Mr. Bennett and then we were good to go. This one here, there you go.
Okay, and will that get into full screen mode from there? I guess when we tab down?
Yeah, I will go ahead and just view.
Now, okay.
That should look strikingly familiar now, hopefully.
Are we good?
But we'll, uh, again, that, that should put us all on par here. Again, I kind of prefaced, you know, what the Fed is in the process of doing, what it is that they're, they're most concerned about at the moment. And, you know, how that is currently impact, impacting the short-term treasury yields. So here we go again, um, let me, tell me if this looks familiar. This is a snapshot as of February twenty-eighth of the overall portfolio for Del Mar College. As you can see, we've got, um, roughly, um, it's approximately thirty-some-odd percent of the portfolio is highly liquid in cash and investment pools. Um, the other, uh, remaining seventy percent of the portfolio is kind of bar-belled in between the short term out to the longer term. Bar-belled meaning we've got a, you know, high degree of concentration there, very liquid, on the very liquid end of things. And we're kind of just light right, uh, in the middle here and a little bit heavier out to the outskirts. So that's currently where we are. Most of what's going on right now for incoming maturities of securities, we're focusing on, keep, kind of keeping those short in nature as we're starting to see, um, some of the construction funds, uh, being spent out. But the weighted average yield is consistent with most portfolios. Uh, right now, it's going to be kind of chasing the treasury yields as the treasury yields are in the process of rising up. Um, currently the money market funds rates are still below the weighted average yield of the portfolio. But we do, again, amongst the active investments, um, those are split out, you know, again, thirty percent being cash. We've got about twenty-six percent of the portfolio is municipal bonds. Um, about seventeen percent is commercial paper. And that's on the rise, um, with all the reinvestments we've been doing here recently. And, uh, lastly, we've got about twenty-six percent of the portfolio invested in, um, US government agency bonds. And then this would be the portfolio, um, the sub-portfolio reflecting where the funds are amongst your different buckets. Obviously, local maintenance, um, your, kind of your general fund, um, having about forty-one percent of that pie. Um, the bond funds collectively that remain are also approximately forty percent of the portfolio combined. But you can see, uh, the eighteen A is fourteen percent, the twenty B is fourteen percent and the twenty A is twelve percent. Then you've got your plant fund and your INS funds. So those are your interest and sinking funds related to your bonds. Here, we've got the pooled funds, just taking a snapshot, which excludes those bond funds from eighteen and twenty. You can see that the wham of the portfolio ending the quarter was right around six months. The average yield of that portfolio is shorter term in nature. It's at twenty-eight basis points, which was an increase slightly over the prior quarter. And again, the allocation of those funds, um, from the previous quarter to this quarter, uh, you can see that there has been an increase in those LGIPs, that blue piece of the pie, is again, kind of your, uh, those are your pools slash overnight liquidity. And, uh, we've just been, again, letting some of the securities that have been maturing, for instance, the green piece of that pie. Uh, we've had a lot of maturities, eight percent of the maturities, um, that occurred were municipal bonds. And we've either been reinvesting in short-term commercial paper, um, or letting it go back into cash. Commercial papers remain somewhat static because we always have maturities in that sector too. Um, you see the yields in the far right column compared to the left column. Uh, you can see there's a, um, for the most part, there's been a trending up except for the municipal securities, where we've had a lot of, uh, investments that we had purchased prior to COVID at higher rates of interest that have matured out, which is contributing to, you know, losing those higher yields, is, uh, slightly reduce that sector. But you see the pools coming up, that's a function of, again, what's going on with the Fed rate increases. And commercial paper rates every time we reinvest are better and better. And then we have the, uh, two thousand eighteen tax, uh, bonds, as you can see, um, from Q two to, um, the Q one to the right of it, you can see how those fund balances are being drawn down, uh, for the current projects. You see the wham is, uh, maybe a little bit higher because we've spent, we're spinning down the cash. So that too is going to equal out as we, um, you know, start to, to move out and, uh, either shuffle some of the, um, investments in the portfolio. And again, the twenty bonds is a bigger, um, it's still a bigger pool of funds for construction. And you see too there, there's been some spin down from Q one to Q two. And you see, too, there, there's been some spin-down from Q1 to Q2. We've seen that obviously decline by about seven million. And the WHAM there's, you know, somewhat similar, yield slightly higher. And then when we look overall at the asset allocation of those bond funds, you can see that more than half of them are in agency bonds. We've got about ten percent in commercial paper. The munis is twenty-five percent. And anything that's maturing right now, we're just letting it go back into the pools, so. And that will continue to be the focus as we see, until the construction funds have a pause or slowdown, we see an acceleration right now. And that's, again, that's pretty much the Q2 in a nutshell. If you have any specific questions on either what's going on with rates or what's going on with your portfolio, feel free to ask me.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm glad we all got on the same page there. But thanks for having me out.
Do we take action to accept the college's quarterly financial report? Excuse me, quarterly investment report? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Villarreal, second by Mr. Garza. Any public comment on that motion? Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Garcia, the college's quarterly financial report, please.
Yes, ma'am.
It's the mouse moving up here. It keeps moving it on my side. Fit to one page. Close this.
Okay, so, so let's begin with the revenue section, which is this piece right here. Revenue's right here. So, the college's revenue remains overall stable relative to prior years due to improved tax collections, offset by downward pressures in our tuition and fee revenue attributed in part to the persistence of the pandemic. In addition, the downward trend in miscellaneous revenue is caused by a reduced investment yields relative to prior years. But as we heard from Mr. McQuaid, we do see brighter future down the line. Moving on to expenses, this category down here, all these categories here. So, operating expenses. The college is currently experiencing an elevated operating cost for non-salary with a reported amount of eleven million dollars relative to the prior years of nine million dollars. This is attributed to the college's transitioning back to normal in our operations paired with inflationary pressures. Notably, the year-over-year increased expense categories include equipment, supplies, postage, copier rental, and maintenance and repairs. Are there any questions on the financial statements on the revenue and expense before we move on to the balance sheet? Very well. As of February 28th, 2022, the college has a sound financial position to weather current and most business interruptions, including the current pandemic, with a cash and investment position of eighty-seven point seven million dollars. In addition, the college has sufficient liquidity to pay its current obligations valued at approximately nineteen point eight million dollars. Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members of the board, if there are no questions, this concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions for Mr. Garcia? Now, is there a motion to accept the college's quarterly financial report as presented? Mr. Kelly makes a motion? Second. Second by Dr. Turner. Any public comment on this item? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we will take action. Discussion and possible action related to our 2022 redistricting plan. We had a workshop and public hearing this morning and received no comment at the public hearing. And there were no additional questions on Plan D as we have presented. So, Mr. Rivera could not be with us for this afternoon's session. We did review our, both our timetable as well as our process in detail this morning. And if you would just put item, if you can put map D up. There we go. So this is our, our final version for, not final version, if this, if the board is pleased with where we are today, then we are prepared to move forward. Are there any questions or comments from board members on our redistricting plan or the map in front of us? If not, then the chair would appreciate a motion to approve and adopt the 2022 redistricting plan as presented, and that would be Plan Draft, Draft Plan D.
I move that we adopt Plan Draft D.
Second.
Approve and adopt.
Approve, yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcia, Mr. Rivera gave me that instruction. So Mr. Kelly makes the motion, Mr. Garza seconds that motion. Any public comment on this item? Any other questions or comments from the board? Let's do something different. Let's do a roll call vote. Ms. Pettis, we haven't done one of those in a while.
Dr. Adamet?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bassam?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Villarreal?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I caught you off-guard there, Ms. Pettis, sorry about that. That motion carries unanimously. I again want to express my gratitude to Mr. Rivera in his absence for guiding us through this process over the last several months and to the Biggerstaff Law Firm for their assistance in preparing these maps. We have an adopted redistrict plan for our new regent districts. Thank you all very much. We will move on to item number seven, which is discussion related to inter-local participation agreement between the Texas Association of School Boards Risk Management Fund and Delmar College. Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Chair. And since this is an inter-local agreement, that why it comes to the board for approval and signature authorization. The inter-local participation agreement, or IPA, is the foundation agreement of TASB, which is the Texas Association of School Board Risk Management Fund that sets out the basic term, conditions, and requirements of fund membership. The fund is a self-funded risk pool in which Delmar College participates in for general liability, auto liability, workers' compensation, and unemployment compensation programs. The last IPA that was approved by the fund and signed by the board was in April of 2012. So the explanation of changes, they came in three different areas. So there's amendments to clarity and purpose and meaning, to updating the fund members' duties and obligations, and also revising the dispute resolution provisions. So we'll quickly go through the clarity. Program participation, so I'm sort of reading everything word for word. It just lays out the original fund programs till law expansion. So basically, they went from detail to generic so that they're able to expand the programs that they offer. They don't have to go change the agreement every time. The agreement to pay contributions, it addresses it separately, the amount that you owe when you agree to be a fund member. And if you fail to pay, then it's kind of more clarity on what happens if you fail to pay into the fund that you agreed to be part of. Contribution and coverage summary, this is basically how much you contribute or what it will pay and what coverage is available through the programs. So it just had more clarity on, on that section. Other duties of fund members to address the cooperation and access of fund members' data. So if they have the data on a fund member, then basically we're saying they have access to, to use that data when they are implementing our programs for us. And subrogation assignment of rights. And that is, it combines two different sections and puts it into one subrogation section. Updates to member duties. It spells out more on termination. If you want to terminate the agreement, you have to do so thirty days prior to the expiration of your fund agreement. And if you give them less than thirty days, then it does put in a, like a percent that you have to pay into the fund as exiting with late notice. And it also says that if you give no notice and it's after the date you enter into the fund, then you still owe your full contribution. Because since it is a risk fund and it is programmed that all members will participate, and that's how they know that they can cover the, the, any claims that are presented to the funds, they have to know you're gonna participate for the year, so they do say you have to contribute. Loss prevention, they have provided loss prevention in the past, but they're stating that if they do provide loss prevention for you, they do expect you to implement reasonable suggestions from their loss prevention services. Fund members' designation of a coordinator states that the fund member must appoint an employee with appropriate authority as a program coordinator, and they cannot delegate that to a third party. Risk sharing agreement, participatory degree, like I just said, this is a self-funded program. It's a risk pool. It is not an insurance contract. So they wanted to make sure that that was clear in, in the agreement. This is not an insurance contract. And then authorization states that the fund member authorizes the program coordinator or CEO to approve and bind current and future agreements with the fund. This is just to, to bring those duties so that they know specifically who can and cannot has, have such authority. In addition, it authorizes the signature that the new IPA requires the authorized signature, which would be from the board, the chair of the board, and also the date that the board approved or adopted the new IPA. So that, that will be part of the signature page. And the revisions to the dispute resolution requires an appeal to the fund board first, has to be filed in Travis County, a waiver of estoppel, and then the assignment clauses updated and moved to a different section. And yes, Mr. Rivera did review the IPA revised agreement and especially this section, and he agreed to move it forward. So that is the revisions to the agreement, and there was a copy of the new agreement in your packet. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How is our contribution computed?
It depends on the program. So, like, like, let's say it's your general liability or your auto liability. They do look at our claim history, how many times we have filed a claim with the fund. And so it looks at claims history. It looks at our exposure, like how many vehicles we would have in a fleet, which, you know, we have very few. But then it also combines that and puts it to a pool so that if you have one incident that happens, your risk is pulled together with everyone else, so maybe that one incident does not have that great of an impact on your next, in a sense, your next rate that they charge you when you're in this group as a risk pool. And so it's different, like with workers' comp, that's a different way they compute it. That's based off of payroll, and it's based off of rates. And those rates are determined by what category of employee you fall in to where someone who works in an office is a lower rate than someone who possibly is electrician. They have a higher rate per, and it's based off of payroll dollars.
So when they send us a bill for, for our contribution, we, we can recompute it to verify that, that the numbers are correct?
A lot of it is done in the background, just like, just like if you would file. It's done by actuaries, and it is very similar to how you would rate for insurance. So some of them, yes, you can take, like workers' comp or unemployment insurance, it is rate-driven, and it's driven off of payroll dollars, so you can take that and verify it, yes. On some of the liabilities, it would be much more difficult. It's not, it's not like your, our property casualty insurance where it has a rate per value of a building. It's not written that way. Your liability in auto is based off of other calculations, actuarially, your exposure, your, your risk factor, how big of a risk are you, and your claims history. So that would be challenging to do.
So effectively, we're relying on a third party to tell us that the number is right?
Well, like I said, we can check some of the programs and cross-check the numbers in several of our programs. But we do provide them the data. So we do provide claims history. We provide information that they ask of us so that they can rate our programs. And so we do have a way of cross-checking to make sure they use the right data to calculate the amount that we pay into the fund.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to accept the inter-local participation agreement between Delmar College and the TASB Risk Management Fund as amended by the fund effective May 1st, 2022?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Garza? Is there a second? Second by Dr. Villarreal. Are there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McDonald. Item number eight, discussion and possible action related to approval of the Oso Creek Campus Utility Easement. Mr. Strabos.
So there's a development to the west of our property, and they would like to put a utility easement on the north side of our property. It's just inside of the drainage ditch, so it does not impact any of our future plans. And they will actually pay for the construction of a sanitary sewer line, so there's a temporary construction easement that they need as well. And because of its location, this does benefit Delmar College, and that we can tie directly into the sanitary sewer line, and no cost to us. So we recommend approval of this. You do have a map that shows where that proposed location is as part of your overall attachments.
Thank you, Mr. Strabos. Are there questions regarding this action item? Yes, sir, Mr. Kelly.
And I see that the temporary easement for construction didn't have an end date. How long do we anticipate that's gonna be going on?
They want to get it done as soon as they can. They can't start till it's, it's chicken and egg. They can't start till we have a notice. But we'll have a, again, we'll have a defined date in that easement itself as part of the overall agreement for the construction agreement.
And I see one of the advantages to us is that we're gonna get to tie into it as we build out on our property. Do we have to pay back part of the cost of putting in the sewer line as we tap into it?
No, sir, we will not. There'll be some connection fee with the city of Corpus Christi when we connect, but we will not have to repay the developer or the city for this actual construction.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the utility easement as presented by staff? Motion by Mr. Kelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Turner. Any additional questions or comments? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, discussion and possible action on awarding a contract under request for competitive seal proposals for the Windward Campus Central Plant Phase One improvements.
On our Windward Campus, we did renovations five years ago now as part of the bond. But there was an existing chiller and cooling tower, and those have exceeded their life expectancy. We expect them to fail literally almost any day now. And the challenge with that, then, is that the remaining system, the newer system that's five years old, cannot handle the full capacity of all the buildings at operations, so we've got a critical repair that we need. We've advertised for competitive seal proposal. We've received responses. We've evaluated those. Recommend an award to Texas Chiller Systems. They are the low bidder. They're the low qualified bidder. And that bid price, then, you have listed there, an award for two million fifty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. And this is funded using 2014 bond funds.
I have a question. So I'm cur, I'm unclear as to the existing cooling tower and chiller. When were those originally installed?
So, this system is twenty years old. It's exceeded its life expectancy. There is a newer system that is separate that it was put in five years ago as part of the original part of the 2014 bond. And that system's working fine. We don't have any problems with it. But it does not have sufficient capacity that if the separate system fails, then we wouldn't have enough air conditioning for the, all the buildings.
That's what I was assuming, but I didn't, I didn't hear that clearly, so I just wanted to test that assumption.
We have two separate systems, and they work together as a team.
Right.
And right now, the original system that's more than twenty years old is in the process of failing.
Thank you, Mr. Strabos. Any other- Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to award the contract for, to Texas Chiller Systems in the amount of $2 million, over $2 million, using the 2014 bond funds as presented? Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Kelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Adami. Any other questions or comments from board members? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. And lastly, item number 10, related to inter-local contract between Delmar College and City of Corpus Christi to construct the city's police training academy on Delmar College property. Mr. Strabos.
So the board has previously approved this inter-local contract, the City of Corpus Christi, as they further develop their plans, and you've had a presentation on that last month, has identified they need to increase their lease from six and a half acres to nine acres, and we've met with staff, we've reviewed this, and based on the benefits to the college, we recommend approval of this change.
Mr. Dr. Eskemia, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. Madam Chair, what I'd like to add to this is that the additional acreage that goes with this will benefit not only Delmar College but the entire community, as the expansion of this will allow for a fully, a full-scale rubberized track and the like, which we will have access to. And so this is, this is a further enhancement of our partnership, not only with, through, through the agreement, but a, but a physical presence there and access to something that is, that can tie into the trail systems and the, and the kind of abilities to exercising and do those kinds of things on that side of town. So it's a wonder, it's a fantastic opportunity for us. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments related to this item? Chair would look for a motion to approve the inter-local contract and to authorize the staff to negotiate and execute the amended inter-local contract as presented. Thank you, Dr. Adami, for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Turner. Any other comments or questions? Any public comment on this item? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. That's it for our agenda items today. We do have a calendar, we do not have a separate closed session this afternoon, so we will move straight into our calendaring items. Note that we have the Anseldua Plaza and the General Academic and Music Building Dedication on the 21st at 10:00 a.m. In May, we have a walkthrough of our new Oso Creek Campus at 9:00 a.m., and then we will travel back over here for our regular board meeting at 1:00 p.m. So no workshop that day, but we have a tour, so hope that you all can join us for that. On May the 12th, the service awards that we've not been able to do in person for a couple of years, so that's recognizing our employees for 5, 10, 15, 20, we have, we have one or two in there that are 40 and 45-year service awards to the college. So if you can attend, please let Delia know. I'm going to be a little bit late, Dr. Adami is going to be there to present, or to be there and make remarks, hopefully on behalf of the Board of Regents, but if any of you would like to attend, please let Delia know, and, and we'd like for you to do that. It's a breakfast event first, and then the ceremony at 10 o'clock. Our spring graduation will be on the 20th, as Dr. Eskemia reported earlier. Board meeting day in June is the 14th. We don't have it, but we'll add to the calendar, the Community College Association of Texas Trustees Annual Conference is going to be June 16 through 18 in Houston. If you would like to attend, let Ms. Pettis know, because she is reserving hotel rooms and making registration plans. We're working on some grant funding from the state, through the state association, so that we can provide some grant funding for all colleges to attend, have at least one representative there, so we'll let you know, there's, there's potential for that. And it's going to be a great conference, that's my swan song, so I hope you're all there to, I give up the chairmanship at this meeting, so I'm, I'm very looking forward to that opportunity to, to turn that, turn that gavel over to one of our fellow trustees from Amarillo College, so looking forward to that. And then just for your future planning, the Community College Trustee Conference at the national level will be held October 26 through 29, so if any of you who make advanced plans, please look at that date in the future. Other calendar items?
Just a tidbit, but it's very important. I walked the entire campus of the Oso Creek myself a week ago last Friday, and wear comfortable shoes, okay? Be comfortable, it will be air-conditioned and the like, but wear some comfortable shoes, because I didn't, and I actually, I've got blisters to prove it, so it'll help, it'll make it much more enjoyable, we'll have refreshments and water and the like, because it's, it's quite a bit of, it's a lot of square footage, and it is fantastic, can't wait to do that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on our calendaring items? If not, then we will stand adjourned at 2:55 p.m. Thank you all very much.